Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for Tuesday, November the 12th. The hour is 5:31. And I will call us to order and ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Rick Searis. Rick?
Actually, this will be a moment of silence. There's a lot of things that happen in our world, and sometimes they get a little too close to home. What happened just a few weeks ago, I don't think should go unrecognized. We had a fatal accident, as everyone well knows, at the intersection of Third and Main. And certainly, the friends and family of the fatalized one are hurting, as well as sometimes you don't remember that, or we don't think about the person driving the vehicle who claims they never saw them, or that life is going to be changed forever as well. And so, I think we just need to take time to reflect that. And my good friend, the magistrate Atkins, also said, "We just passed Veterans Day." So if you want to put that in your thoughts as well, we'll take a moment here. And I will say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask that we be led in the Pledge of Allegiance, because I don't know if she's going to be here at the next meeting, but I'm going to ask Donna Peak to come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) (inaudible)
Give her, you don't want to give her a pen? Come here. (laughter) Um, Commissioner, you have had the agenda, and because of, because we have a somewhat lengthy executive session tonight, I would like to advocate that we first had the retirement of Lynn Yates, and then combine the two here, the publics, so that those folks don't have to stay around and wait for us. Does that meet with your approval?
You assume we're going to approve an executive session then, aren't you?
I'll let you fight that out with Mr. Scott. So with that, who's going to lead the charge on the retirement?
Come on down, brother.
Tonight, I'd like to recognize Lynn Yates for 19 years of service.
19 years of service to the citizens of Danville. During those years, Lynn swept the streets. He was the leaf truck driver, leaf crew leader, and when the snow hit during all that time, he'd plow, solder roads. Lynn would also fill other needs as they arose, and was the person that, in recent, he would open the fairgrounds when people in the community rented it for events. He gave up his weekends for that. Lynn also worked in her cemeteries when the need arose. And it's pretty much safe to say, he pretty much done every job in Public Works, from potholes to signs to weeds to his general duties of sweeper truck driver. Myself and the crew will miss his presence, and the community, I'm sure, will miss all he has done to keep Danville clean and safe. And it's hard to find somebody with his dedication and helpful attitude that Lynn has had. His position may be filled, but he ain't never going to be replaced. And at this time, I'd like from the public--
(applause)
We kind of wanted to present you with this for you. (laughter)
You want to explain to the audience the significance of this?
Yeah, what would you like to say?
I want to thank the city for putting up with me. And this, I've been here a long time. This is the best crew, the best management I've ever been under, and I just thank everybody. And we'll miss the city, work with it.
That's great. And as is customary, we present you with a little momento for all those silent services that you have done over the years, and we appreciate everything, and hope you have a wonderful retirement. Learn to fish. (laughter) [applause] Hey, hey, gentlemen, just leave a little cake for everybody else, please. All right. While they're out celebrating, let's move right on to hear the public. Normally, we do two of these, one for agenda items, we do that at the beginning, and one toward the middle of the meeting, which is for any item. As I said earlier today, we're going to combine them so that you folks can not be inconvenienced any more than you are. So, three minutes at the microphone, please, and state your name, rank, serial number.
Hi, my name is Matthew Pierce, and I'm a resident here in Danville. Moved here about eight years ago. I just wanted to express my concern about the current rules regarding the zoning and codes, and I think this is related to an amendment that has been brought to you all. I'm not sure where all that's at. When we moved here eight years ago, shortly after that, my mother, who is also here, Janet Pierce, moved here to be closer to her grandkids. And when we were looking for houses in town, we thought about some of the houses that had a little mother-in-law apartment. There are houses that exist like that here in Danville. We decided not to go that option, and we would build one ourselves, we thought. So we bought a different house where we live, and now that we are in a financial position to consider building a little mother-in-law apartment on the property, we found that the codes, as they are currently, the way they currently work, we're not allowed to do that. It's our understanding that people often do it anyway. We would really like to be in agreement with the laws here, but we would like to have the ability to build a mother-in-law apartment for my mother here. And so, we would urge you to take that into consideration as it applies to the updating the codes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Virginia Kaiser, and this is my friend Teresa Hipton, and with us tonight is Trish Wine, sorry, Wine and Donna Bandera. And we're here tonight, first of all, to thank you for letting us have this opportunity to speak to you, and also our thanks for your moment of silence for our friends, for Sue that we lost, Sue Cleveland, and for Shan, who's at the doctor's right now, dealing with injuries from her accident. We are very concerned about the intersection of Third and Main, as I know you all are also, and we came tonight with some suggestions and concerns that we want to share with you. This community is lovely for older people, college students, everyone, and it's so nice that we have the freedom to walk safely at night in the town and feel good about this. And our Friday night group was at the pizza pub and on her way to the community theater when this incident arrived. There were eight couples and me, and now we're down to six couples and three singles. Donna lost her husband two months ago, and now we've lost our Sue. So now, we have six couples and three singles. So our group has changed, as we do as we get older. And this group has been together forever. Their sons were in soccer together. That's what their original, they're soccer parents. And then they added us on as we came about, friends of the soccer parents. So Teresa is going to tell you some of our concerns.
Yeah, I spoke, well, I didn't speak to John Castle, but he did leave me a voice message saying that that's a state road, and that is governed, I guess, by the state and not the county. And I was just wondering where we are today with maybe better lighting for that area, as well as the traffic lights. I know that Ginny and I have talked about maybe having all four lights red until the crosswalk is clear, until it allows the pedestrian to get to the other side, just things like that. We really don't know who to speak to, or what's in the works right now, if there is anything, and I'm really looking for some guidance on that.
Also, we'd like you to bring our suggestions, which is getting away from some of the leaves on the trees down there, getting brighter light bulbs in the lights, which I'm sure you've thought about, maybe a no-left turn from Third Street onto Main, and no turns on red. And then, I don't know what the professional name for it, but there is a name where all of the lights turn red and all the pedestrians walk, and then once they're cleared, then the traffic flows. And anything you could do so that this tragedy would not happen to family and friends, where people lost their wives, their mother, their grandmother.
And it is, I know we only have three minutes, but it is really dark on that corner. I know that by Speedway, there are a lot of really bright overhang light, hanging lights. So I think we're just looking for, you know, who would we speak to, what direction, hopefully there is a direction to move forward.
It's our custom that we don't respond.
Okay. I've never been to a city--
Well, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Let me suggest that you set a time to meet with City Manager Ron Scott. And Ron, if you'll let me know when that is, I'll be glad to sit in. Any commissioners are welcome to do that, too, because we have done a lot of work to solve this problem, but it's not, I'll just say it's challenging, and I'll leave it at that, and we'll get into details at your convenience.
Okay. We urge you to present this to the Transportation Department of the State.
And I'll, we'll contact you very soon.
Thank you all.
I'm Valerie McMahon, and I am here today on behalf of the Heart of Danville, and also the tragedy that was just spoken about. Last Wednesday night, I dropped my daughter off at Confirmation at the Presbyterian Church, which is where Sue and Shan attend, and I just decided I was going to walk up and down Main Street. And I had my phone, and I decided I was going to take pictures of all the lights that were out. I took 20 pictures up and down Main Street. Now, I know, I've talked to John Castle, and I know it's a state street, so I know our hands are somewhat tied, but we noticed the weekend before that at Bourbon Chase, it was very dark, too. So I would just encourage, somehow, we've got to get our Main Street under our control. I don't know how we do that, but 20 streetlights out after this kind of tragedy is just kind of heartbreaking.
We agree.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Harry Nickens. I'm a resident of Danville for 17 years. We came here from the state of Virginia for three to five years. The best place we've ever lived is Danville, Kentucky. My wife says it, and I testify to whatever my wife says. But I, too, am here to speak about, I'm not sure what the answers are, but we can no longer allow five elected officials to say, "Go speak to John, go speak to District Seven." You are, and I sat in your seat 21 years in Virginia, you are our representatives. You have more clout collectively than all of us out here do together. I turned left on Fourth today, leaving town, and I'm thinking, "It is safer to cross," don't listen to me, chief, "you're safer jaywalking, particularly with the improvements that have been made on Main Street. You get halfway across, and there's a big island right in the middle that I can stand, hopefully uninjured, and then go the rest of the way. You are safer jaywalking than you are at intersection." I turned left on Fourth Street. A block after I turned, there is this big sign, two large flashing yellow lights. The sign says, "State law, pedestrians have the right of way." Now, there's a crosswalk there, but that's in the middle of a sight distance that's 300 feet, 500 feet each direction, and for a person not to be able to eat at a local establishment, and then go to a wonderful community theater without running a risk, you all can help fix it. It's going to take you getting with the state, and I can't believe there are that many lights out, and I really, you all can't allow that. You cannot allow, I don't care who's in charge of the street, you just cannot allow that much lack of visibility on Main Street. So thank you for what you do. You're not rewarded enough, I don't care what the pay is for this role, but we look to you to help lead us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on the same subject, actually, and I wasn't even, I wasn't even planning to, but tonight, on the way here, I stopped at, I got a stoplight at Main and Third, and right in front of me, a person turned left and almost hit a pedestrian. So I thought I should say something tonight, because that was just so unreal. But the person in the car was watching and did stop within inches of the pedestrian, but it was a potential problem. When the Transportation Cabinet was here this summer and talking to us about the lane changes, at the retail, retail business meeting, everyone there said, we divided into groups, and everyone, every group said, "No right turns on red, and definitely a turn signal on the light at Third and Main." Everyone said that, and the Transportation Cabinet said, as you know, that we, that the traffic there did not justify a light, a turn light. I have noticed, and I sense the horrible accidents that we've had, that when, at Fourth, when a car gets a left-hand turn signal, there is no go at the crosswalks. In other words, that, those people, the pedestrians, get a red hand at that time, until the left-hand turn signal is off. So even if you couldn't stop all traffic, you could certainly put in a turn signal at Third and Main, and then that would, then the pedestrians would not have a green light to start across the street. I know all of you are concerned about it, but I just wanted to say that it is a major problem, and people have been talking about it for some time. And as Harry said, I hope you will be able to use your influence on the Transportation Cabinet to get them to make some changes there at Third and Main, and thank you for your concerns.
I'm Nikki Kincaid, and I'm just, because of everybody else talking, I feel motivated to say the same thing, just so you can hear it from more citizens. I know you're hearing it individually. My husband was hit by a car and his bike on downtown, and I've seen three separate people hit, and it's, I don't let my teenage, I don't want my teenage children, or my 10-year-old, from the art center to the library. He wants the independence, but I don't trust the traffic downtown, so.
Thank you.
Same subject, new person. I'm Trish Wine. I'm a townie. I live downtown and walk the streets. The first accident that I was aware of happening was 30 years ago. It was Barb Sochaki, and she was walking with another woman, and they were hit. 30 years is a long time to not address the problem. So I do appreciate you, and I hope you can remedy this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dustin Duvall. I'm the Executive Director at the Heart of Danville. I'm just here today, I wanted to say thank you. Hopefully, most of you all know, and I know most of you all know that, for the Bourbon Chase, Danville won Most Spirited Community, and so I just wanted to come on behalf of Heart of Danville, and thank you all for your support. Specifically, a couple names I wanted to mention, Public Works and the Police Department really helped us out on that night a lot. And in the planning process, some names that really stuck out and helped us was Earl Coffey and Chief Gray, and also Convention and Visitors Bureau really helped with the overarching Boil County to the Race Director and stuff like that. So we really appreciate your all's support in that, we appreciate all their support in that also. And also, if you remember last year, you all requested possibly that more businesses stay open during Bourbon Chase later, and I just want to give you all the thumbs up that that happened, and most of them stayed open pretty late, and even our retail, and some of them even got some business sales out of it, which is awesome. So lastly, just a friendly reminder that back in August, there was a request that we, you all and Heart of Danville, sat down and have a workshop about our work plans, and that request has been asked, and we haven't really heard anything back. So just friendly reminder that that's still out there, if you all still would like to do that. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will, Chair will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Is this for personnel, last?
Personnel.
Don't cover that. I'll move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to KRS 61810F.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Searis, thank you. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Motion carries, we will move into executive session. Chair will entertain a motion that we move back into regular session.
I move so.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. We're in regular session.
I have a motion that I would like to make. In light of the circumstances surrounding a grievance filed against the mayor and the city manager, who is typically responsible for investigating grievances, I move that we hire an independent outside attorney to investigate the grievance of Erica Engel, and also a prior grievance filed by Joyce Collins, and any other related facts. Said independent counsel attorney being Barbara A. Criz of Criz Jenkins Pruitt &amp; Jones, PSC in Lexington. The mayor pro tem is authorized to sign a professional service contract pertaining to the same, so that a written report can be prepared as expeditiously as possible. So Ms. Engel and Ms. Collins, this person and some city staff will be contacting you that will start the investigation. That's my motion.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion?
I feel like I should make a comment that we're doing this because the city manager's involved in the grievance as well, and we need another investigator, typically his role. And that's me pleading ignorance on the whole thing, so if anybody else is like me, there's your explanation.
Any further comments? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, and that meeting day was October the 28th.
How for motion to approve the minutes, as presented?
Motion's made by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Searis, oh, Commissioner Terry, sorry about that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item three is the codes enforcement report. Bridgette? All right. Is Bridgette still in the building?
(inaudible).
Okay. Tell you what, we'll give it, we'll give it a minute till we find her, because I don't want to, I will say this, item four, let's delete item four for now. This is in regard to the Planning and Zoning Text Amendment, as between Steve Hunter, Planning and Zoning Executive Director, and Ron Scott, City Manager, I believe they've come to a conclusion that further deliberation is warranted.
I would say very briefly that we need to have a bit more conversation. There have been questions that have been raised by some of the Commissioners and also staff, and I think, given the complexity of the wholesale changes that are proposed that represent months of work and good work by the Planning Commission, we need to just take a brief pause to make sure that we understand what all of those are. They were done in two different bites, if you will, or two different sections, one in the spring and one more recently. We've had these only for a short period of time. We have had one presentation by Mr. Hunter, or maybe two, I'm not sure which right now. But a bit more conversation, I think we can take this up at the next regular meeting, and be more in agreement with what we're trying to accomplish and how to do that.
So that next regular meeting, when we do this, that should be somewhat lengthy.
Not necessarily. If we have interim discussions with Mr. Hunter, myself, and City Commissioners, I think we can individually have some of these questions asked and answered, and maybe when we have the agenda item on a future meeting, it will go pretty quickly, I would think.
Okay.
And as the 90-day clock is running, and as Mr. Hunter has mentioned before, if we do nothing, they will become effective at the end of that 90-day period. I think proactive is always better, so if we have questions, then we can answer those and come to a clear understanding. That's always preferable to having something passed or become law that we really don't fully understand or maybe agree with.
Good move. Okay. Ms. Lester, codes.
So sorry. You have before you the month of October. We issued 32 business licenses this month. We placed 21 liens and recovered five. We had a total of 42 inspections, and we issued 70 parking tickets. Also, if you notice on the condemned properties, we have 660 Old Checkertown Road is set for demolition. The contractor's been chosen, and that will be coming down in the next couple of weeks. And we have finalized everything on 315 Baughman. That's been completely cleared, and all the way down to the foundation, so.
So let me ask you, Bridgette, about 12, 13, and 14, being 940 Westwood, property's been condemned, it's obviously a health hazard, as well as one of the 500 Logan, and then Forest Avenue, next to Ken, has not come forward. I mean, at what point do we?
Well, we, we do have a certain budget for demolitions and taking care of properties, and we work with the city manager on those properties and determine which one of those will come down this year, and which ones will come down in a future year. But Westwood, we've had to, because of the extensive nature of the infestation, we had to pay and get that treated. So they have one more treatment, and they think that will be, that one will get that back up to par, and then we'll decide whether, where we go from there. But we usually work with the city manager on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So has it been treated, but it still might be demolished? So sorry. You have before you the month of October. We issued 32 business licenses this month. We placed 21 liens and recovered five. We had a total of 42 inspections, and we issued 70 parking tickets. Also, if you notice on the condemned properties, we have 660 Old Checkertown Road is set for demolition. The contractor's been chosen, and that will be coming down in the next couple of weeks. And we have finalized everything on 315 Baughman. That's been completely cleared, and all the way down to the foundation, so.
So, let me ask you, Bridget, about 12, 13, and 14, being 940 Westwood. Property's been condemned. It's obviously a health hazard, as well as one of the 500 Logan. And then Forest Avenue, next to Ken, has not come forward. I mean, at what point do we?
Well, we do have a certain budget for demolitions and taking care of properties, and we work with the city manager on those properties and determine which one of those will come down this year, and which ones will come down in a future year. But Westwood, we've had to, because of the extensive nature of the infestation, we had to pay and get that treated. So, they have one more treatment, and they think that will be, that one will get that back up to par, and then we'll decide whether, where we go from there. But we usually work with the city manager on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So, has it been treated, but it still might be demolished?
I'm not sure exactly what the condition of that one would be, whether it's up for demolition, would be up for demolition or not. But we would work through that process. But the infestation, we had to take care of. We had to pay for it and get it taken care of.
So, there are manners in which you cannot demolish without treating, because certain insects would go to neighboring properties.
Right. I understand.
So, that's why the process is.
I just, I hate to see these houses be demolished when we could get them into different hands, and instead of demolishing them, we could renovate them. And I do know that the Housing Authority is trying to get a Scholar House program for single parents in school, and we are tearing houses down when they could possibly use that. So, that's my soapbox, and I think we need to find a different solution than tearing houses down.
Yeah, and I know you probably get tired of hearing my standard response on that. But the city didn't place the properties in those positions. And what your argument neglects is the effect on the property surrounding those, due to the fact that the city cannot transfer ownership with a magic wand. There is sometimes a very lengthy process. Owners cannot be identified. And so, you're left with the decision, rather, not to renovate or to tear down, but simply, are you going to alleviate a burden, or are you going to allow it to remain pending the identification of future heirs and owners through a court process that is not only time-consuming, but extremely expensive to the city, all the while, property values of surrounding properties would be deteriorating. So, it's a complicated issue. I understand your position, but also, I state that to, in defense of the work that the codes office does, to say that the city's often in an unwinnable position.
I know. And my standard response is, other cities are doing it, and we need to figure it out.
Well, there are a lot of times, too, though, that once we tear down and get the property to a certain level, there are opportunities for others to come in and take over. Once we can establish, you know, they either sell the property or can find another way to use it, but.
That actually has been the better model. And the fact where the city has demolished the properties, it has, in effect, made them marketable, and the court processes have continued, and they've gotten in the hands of, like Habitat for Humanity and other individual organizations that have built, but simply, a new structure on the property. So, the city has returned these properties, in many instances, to marketable, habitable homes.
Anything else from Ms. Lester? Thank you, Bridget. That's up to her. Did you ask her?
She knows. I just want to report on some code enforcement on our end, because some of it falls in our office. And as you guys know, a couple of months back, going back to the zoning ordinance, you know, the staff made some concerns about code enforcement in that document, and maybe it was just clarification. But we're doing code enforcement on the zoning side 100%. Ian, Bridget, they come over to our office almost daily. A lot of these things are property maintenance and zoning, and we figure out how to do both. The code enforcement role is actually me. I'm going out, and we're picking up signs in the right of way. Every Friday, they're back by the dumpster. The complaints we get are mostly in the county, though. We got one building we're having to be torn down. It's in the wrong spot. We got a couple of illegal trailers. We get a lot of illegal mobile homes out in the county. I go out there. I actually worked yesterday. Had to go out and deal with a paving company and an illegal garage way, way out in gravel switch. So, it's the only day we can meet with the property owners to talk about an illegal house that's actually being constructed. So, we're doing code enforcement. Interesting enough, the notices of violation come from our office. We have, right now, in the city 100% compliance of all our cases without writing any citations. Signs are a different issue, and we get lots of sign complaints, and I handle those myself. Again, we're working together on several of these, and Ian takes the lead on a lot of these. But then we figure out, what's the zoning side, what's the property maintenance side, and then we both go out and work together on it. So, if you guys have any complaints, you know there's a violation, you can always call us. There's been some talk about gravel parking lots. That's another thing related to the zoning ordinance. Right now, there is no clarity in that book on whether gravel's allowed or not allowed. So, I know the city engineer turned in a parking lot to me the other day. It's been expanded. It's gravel. It's not technically a violation, because we don't define surface type in Chapter 8 of the current book. It just says you have to have parking. Doesn't say if it has to be paved or not. Yet, there's an assumption that all the parking lots are paved. And right now, we got a little bit of problem with gravel parking lots. One on Stanford Road, one here on the other side of Viaduct, couple out in the county. The ordinance isn't clear on that factor on gravel. That's one of the things we're trying to fix. So, we haven't gone out and cited anybody or sent any NOVs for the gravel parking lots. What we tried to do for a few of the manufacturing businesses is make them get a temporary use permit, which we think addresses the issue to, can we figure out, give them a timeframe to get the parking lot paved. And that's what we did for American Greeding. We gave them a six-month window under a temporary use permit to allow the gravel, and at some point, they're going to have to make a decision, pave it, or maybe there's another option. So, we are doing code enforcement pretty much all the time, and I got a complaint today about an illegal wedding venue down in the Perrville area that I got to go out tomorrow on. So, that's what we do. I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys may have, or you guys can forward them to Bridget, if you have any code enforcement concerns on zoning.
Do you have fines?
What's that?
Do you have fines associated with violations?
Yeah, we're now, we have civil fines on city side. The zoning ordinance has always been a civil option. We weren't citation officers. We now are. We've sent lots of notices, but we haven't had to issue any citations at this point.
Usually, they correct it after the notice?
We just go, we show up at the house or business and tell them to take the sign down, or, you know, we've had some problems with mostly signs in the city, but out in the county, it's mobile homes. We just show up, tell them they got to move it or get a permit. A lot of times, remedies, you simply need to get a permit, and then our building inspector gets involved.
We spend a lot of time educating people. It's more about helping them get into compliance and just educating them on what the rules are. And sometimes, we do have to send the NOVs or the citations, but those are more severe cases, usually. It's more about just education, a lot of times.
Thank you, ma'am. City manager report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, for the public's benefit, as well as a reminder to the city commission, please know that we do have that 10 o'clock AM meeting tomorrow to discuss semifinalist candidates for the city manager position. And so, that is on the agenda for tomorrow. We have a fairly detailed engineering report that I'm going to ask John Castle to provide. I had intended to ask him to do that, but I didn't get it listed. So, with your permission or approval, we'll just let him come up and give that report, rather than me repeating that. We have been at work on kicking off the downtown master park, or master plan project, and Earl has got a detailed report on that, so I'll just mention that. We also, tonight, again, talked about meeting to continue to understand and resolve any concerns about P&amp;Z meetings or P&amp;Z ordinance. And I'll be having meetings with the city commission, who are interested in participating in that this week and next, so we can hopefully get that on a future agenda item. With that brief report, I'll just say that we're busy on all those fronts and others, and ask John to give a update on the engineering that's been occurring in the city.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, public. I'll make this quick. Reading line by line through here without any introduction. Main Street marking lane reduction with the comments that were made before. We are monitoring the safety concerns. Chief Gray is in contact with the state KYTC District 7 Chief Engineer, and we're already working back and forth with some things. We're doing some stuff to monitor the lighting better. So, things are being done on that, without going into details. Streetscape, we're almost done with that, as far as getting the punchless work done, getting them paid. Splash pad's been winterized, and we're starting to place concrete for the overflow. So, the kids that enjoyed the gravel, playing in that, we won't be able to allow them to do that anymore. We'll have a concrete spillway that'll resist erosion better. Won't be as much fun. The, a lot of projects and stuff we've got going on, Public Works is still doing a lot of repairing and replacing sidewalks and curb. One thing I wanted to note, we began leaf pickup early, but now we're back on the regular schedule. So, anybody that has leaves, the idea is you get them out to the curb, but not in the curb and gutter, not in the street. If you want to know when your street's going to be covered, you can look it up on the website, the city's website. Basically, we're halfway through the first rotation, and basically, we hit all the streets before Thanksgiving, and then we go hit them all again between Thanksgiving and Christmas, with individual days where we go back and pick up where some people may have come back later on. The Bunny Center, concrete first floor deck and wooden second floor decking are complete. Metal hand railing is being painted, so that'll be in good shape for this coming spring. We'll finish landscaping in the spring before John Bell's ready to open it back up again, and that'll be really nice for the kids to come crashing down that decking and everything. Now, it'll be a lot stronger to hold them and handle their exuberance better. We're working with codes to create a sidewalk maintenance management program that's still up in the air, but the idea is just trying to have a better way of monitoring conditions and being proactive with codes to help people get their repairs done and get things back in shape and safer. We're going to be meeting with Commissioner Sears tomorrow for a to-do list at Jackson Park to help possibly see what can be done to get things in better shape there for the Parks and Recreation folks in the spring. Center College Wayne, Center College's Wayne King has asked that we put in, or somebody put in a temporary crosswalk at Beatty and Walnut to help student access during their construction process. And we're basically giving them permission to do that, their contractor, do the painting, and then remove it when all said and done. It just improves the safety during their construction at that time. Wayfinding, we are getting started on that. We've gotten the presentation y'all sold about a year or so out back, and getting down into the details with that. And again, it's probably going to be more into December before we start making a presentation on the first batch that we want to submit to get y'all's okay on the wording and everything. Let's see. Streamland Stormwater Investigation, we met with strand engineers last week. They're going to be finalizing the recommendations. Again, that's another thing we'll probably present to y'all in December. The Fall Street paving list started. We got Independence Court last weekend. We're hoping to get Short Street out here in the next couple of weeks. But we're getting to the end of the paving season, so we probably won't be getting back into that full list. But then, the other thing that'll happen is during the winter, we usually have our salt guys going out checking the condition of the streets as they're spreading salts and plowing snow. And they give us feedback on the conditions of the streets, so we may be adjusting the list, not just taking what we had on there before and picking up from where we left off, but re-looking at the list and having a new list to show y'all in the spring. Henson Trail's the last thing. Mr. Schouter has it 100% rocked in and cleared, so we're just waiting for that last bit of asphalt, and then he can finish the grading and cutting some of the trees and stuff back. Some of them have come down, and branches are in the way of people bicycling on there right now. And he'll get that stuff out of the way, and that'll hopefully be opened up soon. Any questions?
John, if you don't mind, hang there for just a minute. Ron, is there anything else in your report?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll go into commissioner comments, and I want to, go ahead.
I wanted to ask him a question. Were you able to make any headway on getting the state to pave, or at least patch, Third Street between Main and Broadway?
It's like the lights and the safety issue that everybody else is bringing up. We got to go through the process, and they have their process to go through, too. So, we really don't have anything further on that.
Well, I'm really frustrated by the whole situation. Clearly, we have to do something. And the only people I know that the state responds to is the public. They really don't respond much to me. They don't respond that much to the judge. We've been in meetings with them, and I'm going to advocate that we have a public meeting. I think those people need to, they need to hear what we heard tonight, times 20. They need to understand how wrong this is. I mean, it's just plain wrong. And you're the messenger, so don't misunderstand.
Actually, if I can unmute you. Chief Gray, I was just wondering, some of the emails you've gone back and forth with Kelly Baker at District 7 up there. Didn't you already start talking to them about us getting together with them, at the very least, with staff, to start talking to them about stuff? And then, we could possibly segue into something like this.
Well, this staff wants to be included, and I think out of courtesy, we ought to ask the county judge to be included in it, too.
Yes, sir.
Well, and lighting, you know, that should be an easy fix. If there are, if there are streetlights out on Main Street, we should be able to at least replace a bulb until the responsible party, whether it be KU, or the state, or whoever it may be. Do we have light bulbs that we can change out as needed, and then either bill the state, or KU, or whomever? Or would they supply those for us to just keep it lit?
Two things. One, the streetlights on Main are, belong to the city. We maintain those. And we have different electrical contractors. I know that we have one working at the intersection of Third on those lights. We do that generally twice a year. We have the contractors go through and review those. I don't know that the status, I'm speaking for John on this point, because he's not had to address this seasonally yet. But I don't know that their schedule. I know they're up there. They have been working downtown. Is that not true?
Right.
And so, that's a regular, ongoing maintenance thing. The lighting system that we have downtown is not sufficient, right? It has, even when they're lit, they're not bright enough. So, when you look at the standard we have in front of City Hall now with the new streetscape, you will notice a significant step down once you go west of, or, excuse me, east of Fourth Street, right? And so, even when they're all lit, they're not great. I've been up there with contractors in the middle of the night last summer, last fall, and they weren't bright, and they were all lit. But those, that lighting system, though, in addition to not being sufficient, is very weak. It was put in by somewhere in the 80s, and it is, you can, you lose current. It trips. It burns bulbs. You can put a bulb in today, put one back tomorrow, and it will blow it right back out. Pope Works has had that issue. We generally have changed the pedestrian ones with Ronnie Yates and staff, but that is a battle. And until, quite frankly, until we get the streetscape changed, any given week, you will have lights that are out. Pope Works may fix those. The next week, you may have the same number, but they may be different lights. You can also lose a whole block, which we did for an extended period of time. And even the new lights, you know, they're finicky, their computer. And when the lights reset, the mayor's had noticed plenty of times up there on Third Street, when those lights are out of sync with your daylight, when you have an electrical storm, that the computer resets. So, you got to go back in and reprogram it, which is fine. That's just part of maintenance. So, it's all maintenance. The Main Street lights is not on the state. They're on us as city staff, and city staff works to maintain those on a regular basis. I would point out that pedestrian injuries at that intersection at Third do not occur at night. They occur, generally speaking, both during the day at all hours. It is not necessarily, this particular one may have been associated with a poor lighting event. We don't know that. But I would point out that that intersection, the most recent occurrence, was during the broad daylight, right? So, it is a conflict geometrically with the intersection in some format, and it's a matter of trying to figure out and discover what that is. I know the state has been working on that. I know they continue to work on that. And, you know, some of the things we know we can do is add the bump outs to that intersection, decreasing the pedestrian travel time. The geometry of the intersection changed. Vehicles are not in the same locations that they were before the four lane. So, what we need to make sure is, is that the computer system acknowledges the travel time for the pedestrians. Clearing cars is a little different now versus than what it was before. And so, when they talk about the all-red phase of the signal, did that change sufficiently, or did we base that off? And so, all those decisions, the state is revisiting all of those, as well as some new traffic counts. You saw the cables up there last week. They're evaluating that now. They're evaluating that now, and again, and trying to, you know, they're trying to discover what is the issue. In the end, when you have a left turn movement in that way, where you have the pedestrian screened with vehicles as they're moving, the intersection at Third Street northbound on the west side, the pedestrian screened by vehicles, and it's hard to pick up with your eye when you're turning left. That's going to be a difficult thing for the state to resolve. We've talked about enhanced crosswalks. We, you know, maybe there, maybe we have to revisit that with the state in trying to define what that is and create an enhanced crosswalk that they will approve. We don't know that, but it has been an ongoing conversation with them. Currently, they're evaluating the structure, I mean, I'm sorry, the geometry of the intersection. That's a lot of words, but it, there's not necessarily an easy solution. But it's, lighting is not necessarily the culprit, might have been in this case. But staff is, Public Works is working on the lighting.
So one of the key components here is getting a streetscape approval for Second to Fourth.
We would strongly advocate for that.
Because once you do that, then you can fix the electrical underneath. Sorry, folks, the genko trees are going to have to come out. Yes, you heard it here. And readjust all the lighting, and then a new sidewalk, and then bump outs. So that one action cures at least five or more things that have been troublesome for this community for several decades. And that is going to be a political issue. And we probably ought to create some kind of strategy as to how we're going to navigate that political issue, because it's going to require money out of Frankfurt. And there's money in Frankfurt, you just got to be able to chisel it out. But it's time that, it's time that we got everybody together and pulling in the same direction and solving this problem. And I really get frustrated when they say, "Well, we've got to have a traffic count."
They just did.
How about, how about a body count? Is that what you want?
Yeah.
I mean, give me a break. That's enough.
Well, Mayor, before you move on though, there's been discussion, and I think one of the ladies brought it up today. Where I'm from, we call it the barnyard setup, the barn door setup, whereas that at a major intersection, you stop all traffic. Don't turn and no straight forward or nothing, just you stop it, and then pedestrians cross any way they want to cross, and then you put the lights back through the cycle. And then one particular city, that doesn't happen until someone pushes a button that says, "I need to get across the street." Some cities, it just cycles that way all the time, all day long, all night long. Somebody want to investigate this? The city of Fredericksburg, Virginia would be a good example. They have three, four blocks where they do the barn door on their Main Street, and it slows traffic down and allows people who are traveling to Main Street to cross any kind of way they want to, because everything stops. At Third and Main Street, it all stops.
Earl, do you know if that conforms with their protocol?
You can do a protected phase, absolutely, they can do that. The challenge is, is to, the, I don't, there's an aspect of their protocol, and I'm going down into the rabbit hole in my mind, there's an aspect of their protocol that they could violate by doing that. Without getting into that, adding, increasing the time of a protected phase is something that is permitted. They have to evaluate it so they don't get down into this. And it's, you know, they can't lower the level of service for the intersection by doing that, in other words, just to tell you what it is. They're not permitted to lower the level of service of an intersection, but they can add time to that phase, your all-red phase. And I know they're looking at that, they're looking at that.
Can they, can they lengthen? Right now, the pedestrian walk is, someone told me it's seven seconds ahead of the light.
Oh, ahead of the light.
Ahead of the light. So as it stands, you're a pretty good target out there in the middle of the street when the light turns green. So is there any way to just simply lengthen that to allow the pedestrian to get all the way across before the, or at least almost all the way across so that you're not a
Correct. That's exactly what we would want them to study and evaluate, which is that all-red phase, making it long enough. Curb curb 60 feet. The old middle of the road was about 30. The new middle of the road is about 40 feet, because you've added a turn lane, right? Plus or minus. So, you know, you need at least extra time to clear that turn car, that turning car, turning northbound on. So we don't know all those details. They are, we have highlighted things like that for them to verify. And so, they're doing that right now, because that is their intersection, they do program it, but we have asked them those questions, or similar questions to that. And that's the conversation. So when we say that, Chief Gray, is it in discussions with them, things like that are things we're hoping that, you know, we discover based on that correspondence, we kind of help find that out so we can answer those locally. Right now, we don't know fully.
Would it help if we, a group of us, Chief Gray, yourself, Ron, John, if we went to District Seven and just had a full debriefing, so that all ears and eyes hear and see the same thing?
Yeah.
And take the commission too.
I think your frustration is probably the same as mine, is there doesn't seem to be any urgency on the state's side. And first of all, they did extensive traffic studies before they did the restriping, so why can't they use at least some of those numbers? And I know those traffic counts have probably changed some with the new striping, but it's still the same number of cars going through there.
This is the same group that didn't want to put a turn signal at Fourth and Main, but that's turned out to be a great move. It's the same group that refuses to do the same thing at Third and Main.
And Main and Maple.
It just, it just, it just doesn't make sense.
And Mayor, I'd like your thoughts about a meeting, but I'd rather for the meeting to be where it comes to a chamber like this, and we have an opportunity to have the public come in as well.
I'm good with that, if you can get them to do it.
Yeah, I know, but I understand it.
So how can we help you?
Don't answer all at once.
I will take some of this discussion. I think that, you know, some of those turn, you talking about some of those protected lanes. I think the state came in a couple of years ago, and they talked about doing that. And they talked about doing that with this current striping, would make it better to do that. I do think that, you know, there's been improvements that have been made. Unfortunately, accidents do happen. That was just a, there was a lot of bad circumstances that night. A lot of the things that we have at that intersection are, the state can't make every allowance for every problem we have at that intersection. It comes down to, you know, people being responsible and the drivers giving full attention. There are a lot of things at that intersection, factors where the buildings move up to the very corners of that street, the way vehicles are designed nowadays that limit visibility. And it's all about awareness and visibility there at that intersection. Like I said, unfortunately, you know, there was a grave accident that happened, and there were a lot of factors that happened that night. I think that, you know, myself, Earl, and John, we've all talked about things for years. Yes, we have. And, you know, like I said, most of the accidents don't even happen at night. That's one of the few accidents I know that, you know, a couple of years ago, I went back and looked at every accident, and most of them were between 11 and one, I believe.
Yeah, that's when the parking officer was hit.
Right.
Yeah, your parking officer, what, how old is he now? 30 years old? I mean, there's nothing completely healthy as can be, and he was hit, and hit hard.
You know what? We'll continue to look, and we'll try to make that intersection better and safer. I mean, there's some ideas now, that now that you got the, that park, or the no, no use or turns, you know, the roads are different, the lanes are different, there's some different things that we could possibly do now, because we got more, we got more road to work with. But if you remember, you know, we didn't have that until we got this. So it's always a process of continuing to improve and evaluating. Unfortunately, you know, again, unfortunately, we had this accident, unfortunately, that emotions are high right now. But, you know, we really need to, you know, take calm, methodical steps and, you know, and try to make things right. I have talked to them about increasing that walk time, looking at that. But ultimately, if you're going to have that one-way street stop right there with those buildings right there, there's going to be conflict ultimately.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because that is one of the problems. Now, if they're traffic specialists, why can't they see that? They're the ones that configured it that way in the first place.
Would it be useful if that part were to be a two-lane street again? Does anybody know that answer?
I've thought about that, and I don't know where you would, you would change that.
You'd just be shifting the intersection.
Yeah, you're just, you're changing where you would do that. So you're looking, you're looking at another big, long-term, you know, a real big, long-term now with the way the streets are configured now. So, I mean, it's not, and it's not as easy to fix as, as, you know, as we can, but, I mean, it's, it's something that does, it creates a lot of thought. It's going to take a lot of thought and a lot of work. And I think everybody here is trying to make it better, and I think District Seven wants to make it better.
Ron, do you know if in the Downtown Master Plan contract, if it talks anything about traffic design?
Well, you might recall, when our firm made the presentation, they talked about making downtown more a place for people to have events and to have safe events. And there were some discussions of, on some streets, having some pop-up events or advancing the idea that streets were for people and not exclusive to cars. And so, that discussion is coming with the community and tried to reimagine our downtown future with some of those concepts. So I don't know if there's anything precisely recommended, but certainly the idea was advanced that we need to look at our downtown being similar to other, I'll say, cities that have a lot of downtown activity, be it Nashville or wherever else, where people are downtown, and you don't design the streets that will be a safety hazard to them. So I think we're going to be getting into those conversations pretty deeply, I think.
Good.
Everything seems to be kind of long-term. An idea was floated some time back about putting little signs in the street. You've seen them in other communities, pedestrian right-of-way kind of catches everybody's eye. Is that still an option for us? Is that something we can do?
Now, that's the, one of the elements of what I refer to as an enhanced crosswalk, and those are items that the state would have to choose to permit. And that's, will be, again, on our conversation list with them to try to find something that they will be able to accept.
And I brought that up at our meeting, however many months ago that was, and it didn't, it didn't conform to their book.
Have we ever gone to, with the thought that it's easier to get forgiveness than it is permission?
I started down, we started down that road on Walnut, on the west end down there, where we put that 3D crosswalk in, and literally within two hours of me finding it, we got an email from the state saying, that's reminding us, that's not permitted.
And that crosswalk has been used successfully in many other communities. We've seen, we've seen all kinds of different designs, it just doesn't meet the state's book.
Is there a way for us to get control of Main Street? I know, I know we've, I know we've had that discussion.
The state, the city can do that. The streets like that are an asset. And so, theoretically, the state, you know, there has to be some reconciliation of that. And while other communities can try to work that out, in the end, it's satisfying the state's, did, you know, financial reconciliation of that as an asset to the taxpayer that owns it, whether it's a local taxpayer or the state taxpayer. So the roads to the benefit of everybody in the state theoretically as a state road, if it's a local street, the local officials have more control of it, can restrict that use of that road, and therefore then restrict that asset that is owned by the state taxpayer, right? And so, there has to be some consideration of that regardless, and that's just, that's the mechanism. Now, can you go around that in some way and have some political solution to that? I'm sure. But in terms of what options are available to the city staff, are those?
Do you want to address that?
Again, we did that several times. We did a downtown master plan, a TIF project. We had a developer build a parking structure, and the developer agreed to put in an enhanced crosswalk and a light that the state said didn't need the warrants on one of their street. We had a WKU student killed actually by a BG police officer at night, and that was a bad situation, and the city decided to take the streets back home. We just got the state routes out of downtown so the city could control them. WKU took some under contract and put those pedestrian signs and put crosswalks all up and down State Street, everywhere the students, you know, mid-block crossings, whatever we needed to do at the downtown square. All those streets became Bowling Green Streets. Of course, they had to maintain them and take over the cost. They worked a deal with the state on paving a few, then doing the flip, bring them back home so we could choke them down, do whatever we wanted to do. Of course, the MPO was in the planning commission, and we controlled those funds too, so we were able to fund a lot of things out of my office. But we did, we took all the state routes, as many as we could, out of downtown, so they would be local city streets. Turn them two-way, one-way, flip them around, do all kinds of options, and had all the routes rerouted around downtown.
And some of those streets were through the college campus?
And they no longer.
Right, in a similar way that University of Kentucky was able to close Rose Street. Universities have a different standard that they can, they can apply, partly because they're state institutions and receive state funds. And so, that's not always a solution for just a random Main Street. Now, that being said, the campus component of it, being a major university, is significant in that equation.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. He didn't know he was going to be grilled, did he?
I have just two more quick things before we get rid of the city manager report. The meeting tomorrow that you brought up, we're going to quickly go into executive session. I don't know if the public knows that, yeah. So, guys can come and be excused right away, it's up to you. So, the second one is, do we have any report on the Parks and Rec participation agreement? How's that coming?
It's coming well. Mr. Dexter could comment on that if he wished to do so, but my understanding is, it's near completion. We're going to have a final review of that draft documented very near future, and soon we'll be able to present that to the city commission and then to the county. Our goal is to have that reviewed and hopefully acceptable to both parties prior to the end of the year. And I'm saying really in late November, early December.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear that coming. We went to physical court meeting this morning, and they're anticipating that, so that's a good sign. They're looking forward to seeing it. So, just wondering on the progress on it, just like wayfinding. And I'm done. And I'm done.
Make it groundbreaking on the 14th at 2:00. And then I wanna congratulate Steve Hunter and, and all those on his committee for a really productive, if not provocative, conference on smart growth. My only regret is we didn't videotape that because there's a lot of content that went through there. So how we bottle it up and use it.
The committee's going to reconvene and do a strategic set priorities based on the outcomes. Mr. Rumpkin's supposed to get us, Commissioner Terry's on that committee, and we're gonna reconvene and put priorities and summary notes, whatever he's gonna give us to start the point, and we're gonna try to pull live together in a printable document that we can build as a basis. And then talk about doing another possible meeting or conference or making this something that's more frequent than just once every. We still got some costs to deal with. We got some mileage and some other costs we have to handle. Committee's planning to get together as soon as Mr. Rumpkin gives us the summary of all the sessions.
I think there are some PowerPoint presentations and all the slides. Those, those are available for us to review or will be. That'll be helpful.
Any other random thoughts or comments?
Another thing I learned this morning that's good for our community is Nikki Kincaid showed up at the physical court meeting to talk about Constitution Square and maybe not in the same name, but bringing that festival back as an arts festival. So I think that's good news for the community if they're successful in doing that. That is a very, it's a very missed festival. So I think that's real positive. The other thing that I thought was interesting, it's a compliment to this commission and the physical court, is Dr. Benjamin Knoll's polling at the end of the election cycle in that we're a very diversified community, and I, I take that as a compliment. If you, if you saw it in the paper naturally, most of the things were split pretty 50/50 in terms of Democrats, Independents, and Republicans. And I think that's where we want to be as a, as a nonpartisan group, so I was complimented to see that.
Mr. Atkins?
I was, I was gonna say something about the Smart Growth Conference as well. To think about 100 people in our community spend a day together like that was very complimentary. I still warn folks that there were still people missing from the conversation, but it was open and, it was open and free to the public. And then this Sunday, the 17th of November at the Boil County Public Library, there's a, an open book discussion about Just Mercy. It's about Brian Stevenson, a young African-American male who spent his life working to get people fair treatment in our court system. And we spent a couple of hours last Sunday with video, and we come back this Sunday to discuss that. And again, I always like to invite the entire community to come to those things. Was a nice article in the Advocate Messenger last Friday about last Sunday and this Sunday. So please come out and share in this. And then as we speak tonight, there's a, an open meeting for the public. It's local incarceration, and it's been conducted or sponsored by Women's Network. But again, it's out at RECC, and we can't be there tonight, but I sure hope they're having some great attendance because they had all of our local officials who were involved in the jail system here at the county and at the North Point, the state facility, leading those discussions tonight. So I hope they're having some good input from citizens.
What time is that on 17th?
17th is at 3:00, and the one tonight started at 7:00. And that, I keep looking at that clock right there.
It's called a time change.
Oh, okay. So it's, so it's about 7:25. They're just, they're just getting started. Okay, all right.
All right. No further comments. We'll move to item six, payment of the bills. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
Whoa.
Is that a motion, sir?
I moved pay the bill list date in November 12, 2019. See if I can read this number right.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion.
It's a scary number.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item seven is the second reading of ordinance number 1941. This pertaining to the classification plan and compensation plan and policies and procedures for city personnel. Chair will entertain a motion for the second reading.
I move.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion.
Quick question. Mr. Scott on the, talks about the grades for Parks and Rec are, are pending based on the compensation classification study. When do we think that is gonna, we, when are we gonna have that?
Good question. Not sure I can give you the very specific answer to that. I had thought earlier we would have it in October, but due to project manager in that company that we retain to do the work, they're changing jobs, numerous other factors, we're kinda running a little bit behind on that. But certainly, I think we should have it in January, if not before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So really, we're just approving the fact that we're putting these positions into the, into the city, that these will be positions that meet our job, they'll be, well, the jobs descriptions are included, but these are positions that are currently in Parks and Rec, and we're trying to identify the fact that if we do have our own standalone department, that these positions would be available for those folks as city employees.
Yes, it would be authorized positions as of 1-1-19, 2020. That's the intent of that.
And then when, and then when we assign the grades to them, some of these folks have 10, 15 years already in the, the system, so when they come onboard, if that happens, we'll find a way to get them to the grade where they currently are, not be a startable position for anybody.
Well, that's the goal for the whole paying class system, to appropriately classify all employees in appropriate position and with a grade range associated with the duties of that position. So yes, in other words.
So the answer to that question is yes. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Should I read it? I'm gonna read it into the.
Go ahead. Do whatever you wanna do.
This is the second reading of ordinance 1941 and ordinance amending CDO 2-96 pertaining to the classification plan, compensation plan, and policies and procedures for city personnel. Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarris?
Yes.
Item seven, sorry, that was seven. Item eight is the downtown master plan project update, which we've already talked about a bit. Mr. Coffey, anything to add?
Yes, sir. The one thing that is coming to you guys is the consultant, when we met with them, we put the agenda in there that, that was discussed. The biggest thing outside of the memo that we, we included for you was that they wanted to have a workshop with you guys to really get everything started from their end and to, so that you all understand more in depth of what their process looks like. Because, you know, that, that process is gonna be, is gonna involve a lot of community input, as it should, and they want to make sure everybody understands that and that they're, we're all on the same page. That, that will happen in the next 30 days, and we suspect they'll reach out to us in the next few days, within seven days, week or so, to, to schedule that. So anticipate that on coming your way.
Thank you, sir. Item nine is resolution 2019-11-12-02. This is the HDR contract amendment.
This is a little house cleaning item. Based on staff's effort on the project, we, we were able to reduce their resident inspection fee, and this reduction of $25,000 out of their lump sum fee for the corporate drive phase one is attached. This is a house cleaning item. They are not gonna bill us for this, and, but this does put it in their actual contract that we get the credit of the amount identified, $25,000.
Thank you. Do we hear a motion for the resolution?
I move to accept resolution 2019-11-12-02.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is resolution number 2019-11-12-03. This is in regards to the Brevura contract, and, and you have it as a separate item on the desk, not in the book.
No, there, there's two separate, was this?
Oh, yes, yeah. That's because they had a correction. That's right. This is an amendment, this is again a house cleaning item, going back to decision that the commission made. This cleans up their contract to include the design services for the basement and the connection from the new building into City Hall into their, particularly the structural engineering, but also the architectural, the MEP work. It increases the design services, which is based somewhat on the cost to construct, but in this case, it's a lump sum because we're able to estimate it because we know what the scope is.
Do we hear a motion for acceptance?
I move to approve resolution 2019-11-12-04.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Cottle. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Then there's another resolution sitting on the desk up here, and I guess it's item 11. Resolution 2019-1-1-2-04.
Oh, I read that number. Does that matter?
Yeah, yeah, you, the, so you've already passed this resolution by your vote.
Oh, no.
So we'll just set this aside. No. You need a resolution 03.
I'm sorry, I read 04 instead of.
01, 03. You need an 03 resolution.
Don't do that.
Sorry.
Okay, who wants to address this?
So what do we need to do?
Let's go back to the previous agenda item and consider resolution 219-11-12-03, if you all want to do that.
Do we hear a motion of correction?
Go ahead, do it.
So moved. I'm not saying.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Now, we'll go to 2019-11-12-04. This is in regards to, Earl, I guess this is you on water line.
It is. It's, it's revisiting the amendment that we requested back in the summer, the EDA grant amendment. The, we recall, we requested because we had some excess grant dollars on the original corporate drive phase one. We added the 12-inch water main to support industrial growth. That was on staff's radar, certainly our capital improvement plan radar, which was connecting the Daveco Drive 12-inch water line down to Lebanon Road. And then we are also then on the northern side of the Dignio property, connecting it to Minor Road at the top of the hill. This water line is needed. It would, it would have been a project that would have been, eventually been done regardless. So it, it seemed like a good use of the remaining grant dollars. The process then to amend the EDA grant started when we had the original resolution passed. The process for that, there's two steps. The administrative process takes a while. We've completed that. We've received administrative approval. It has to go through their full procedural effort, which the EDA grant administrator said could take a while. Not that it would be necessarily rejected, but they asked that the commission consider go ahead and, and authorizing the contractor to proceed at risk. The risk is half of the $324,000 would be funded by grant. Staff, it, it is a project that we would do, that we would recommend regardless. The reason we are suggesting go ahead and speed it up is because, for two reasons. One, we think that it's with administrative approval, we're fine, as recommended by the consultant who, who is working through the Atlanta office to do that. But then, two, recall, we are doing a lot of improvements on the utility to support growth that is currently underway in the industrial park. As such, this is a component of that, and we need this done so we can go to the next piece. So rather than delay this another couple of months while we're waiting on administrative, or the final, the final word from the EDA office in Atlanta, at the recommendation of, of our consultant, Mr. Hunter, who is the grant administrator on this project, we recommended the commission that you consider proceeding at risk and allowing the contractor at their unit prices identified before to go ahead and start. And, and we don't need any more easements. We don't need anything of that way. We could probably have the water line installed before you actually get the grant approved, finally. And so because of that, and because we have received the, the hard part of the approval, staff recommends you consider doing that and probably would lean towards go ahead and starting. I know that's a lot of words.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, that's a hard one to explain because we, we've already went through the process.
Don't ask, don't anybody ask him how to, how to bank a cash.
Yeah.
I think you're saying.
It can be hard.
I think you're saying that we're gonna construct a 6,800-foot 12-inch water main, and this $324,000 grant, we'd be held responsible for 50% of that.
It, it's a 50/50 match. Do you want to try to stab at that there, Steve?
Let me condense this. You previously approved this project contingent upon acceptance of the EDA grant. What Earl is requesting is that you allow or authorize work to commence on that change order now.
Yeah.
And the grant has been administratively approved, has one more step to go, but due to the unknown timeframe of its full acceptance, completion of the project could be done prior to that time, and this is the season in which it should be completed. The risk is the grant not being accepted, at which time the city would be responsible for the full amount that's listed there as opposed to half. However, staff is saying it would be an advocate for that job anyhow. Therefore, they're asking that you.
Therefore, it's a safe bet.
That's exactly right. I mean, that's not my bet. It's Earl Coffey's bet. It's not my money.
I'm gonna move for approval of resolution 2019-11-12-04, just because I don't have any idea what it says.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, sir.
Earl's gonna put the other half in.
Now, we're, we are, we are now in discussion if there is any left.
I think I'm good.
I fully understand it, and I call for the vote.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before the commission?
Yeah, I was gonna request from our co-commissioners that we have another executive session tonight dealing with personnel. And so I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61.8110, 1F.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second, and I'm curious.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We're going to executive session.
I move we go back into regular session.
We have a motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
We are in a regular session.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second discussion. Mr. Atkins, that meet your approval?
No, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, you guys, too.